Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
Stevens.
Here. And I believe we're going to see a presentation from Elaine on Meadowbrook.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm just going to present to you what we've seen at Meadowbrook since our changes as of July 31st with the golf and banquet operations. Go ahead with the next slide. So just to recap, the changes for this year, we did add a grab and go type concessions in the pro shop. So anytime that the pro shop's open, golfers can get beverages as well as snacks. And that opened on April 1st of this year. With the banquet side, the city operated snack bar, which used to be the grill, opened on April 29th. The city held, took over the liquor license, but currently, we are still operating under the management agreement with the grill by Heritage Liquor License. On July 19th, we were informed that the Department of Taxation has recommended to the Division of Liquor that they proceed with the permit transfer. So it has been a slow process, but I'm glad that we have been able to operate under that management agreement. Also, we had hired the event planner with allowing outside caterers, which seemed to prove very, be very beneficial to renters. In the first few months, we've been working out the kinks, just making adjustments as needed, mostly with the software system. We haven't necessarily changed hours or anything, but we have pretty much been running smoothly here the last couple of months. Next slide. Just to give a breakdown, a little of the financials, the grab and go pro shop that I spoke about, the net, you have the net revenues for when it has been open, April through July. This is with the cost to purchase, the snacks and drinks, as well as the revenue that we have taken in. With the snack bars, that has been open since April, you see that with May, we were a little bit slower. I think it was just getting people to know, hey, we are open, come upstairs. Because it was, I think in previous years, people didn't necessarily know hours and things like that. But then in June and July, we have run strong. So we have been in the black by over 2,000 with staff wages, as well as with the cost of goods and any sort of extra we may have. You know, we may cook five extra hot dogs and have to throw those away. That's accounted as well, so that waste. The, let's see here. So just to let you know that we are open with the snack bar Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday from 9:00 to 5:00. So we have kept those consistent throughout the year. We plan on kind of looking at them once we get into September, possibly next year. But we really wanted to tell the customers, hey, we're open, we're consistent. The only time we've really closed is when golf operations have closed. So. We did start with, because we don't have, we don't cook any food besides hot dogs and sausages from the roller grill, we did in the beginning start offering salads and sandwiches from Rich Taste Catering. But they since stopped their wholesale operation because their catering has taken off. So we are now usually, we're now utilizing Gem City Market, which again, seems to prove beneficial, that people do like to have the option of a sandwich or salad after, mostly after the ladies golf leagues, we seem to sell well. Go ahead with the next slide. And now on to the financials for the banquet side. So this is the facility rental as well as the bar operations when somebody for an event wants to have alcohol or a bar there. So you can see with that how many events we had, how many guests were there during that month, and the net revenue. And I'll speak what's into, what goes into calculating the net revenue here momentarily. But then I'd also like to show you the golf outings that we do have running. Again, with this, I do have to say that alcohol has really helped us with that banquet side. Because of the markup, it has proved beneficial.
Elaine, who's prom did you have that you could serve alcohol?
We didn't have a prom, we didn't serve alcohol at prom. Yeah, no, they, they did not, they did not like that too much. But also, usually baby showers, we don't do a lot of alcohol sales on those either. So, but we did, we brought to you in May that we had, we asked to increase the rental pricing. And that was May 5th of this year. And just to let you know, we don't feel, we feel that we've still stayed steady with the number of events that we booked, because we've had, since, from April 5th to July 31st, we've had 11 bookings at the higher rate, and three of those being full facility rentals. And in addition to those 11, we also have three rentals who booked the day before, so they could set up everything. So 14 total bookings, I think we're doing well. And I don't think that price increase really deterred anybody from booking. If you look, the next bullet is event report review. You also have in front of you a rental, an example rental report. This is kind of what I want to show you to explain how we come up with the net revenue. So with, this is an example of a class reunion. Anything in yellow on this report is what we plug in specifically for the report, so we can calculate the numbers. So you can see with the revenue at the top, we have the rate, any discounts that may be given, any, and any other revenue, that can be from alcohol or beverage revenue, some outings, we have provided hot dogs and chips at the turn, as well as linens and some different things like that. So then you go down to the expenditures. We break out for each personnel. So we do account for the event manager, Amanda's time for the event. So you can see that not only are her wages include, but included, but the, any sort of health and dental insurance, pension, workers' comp, Medicare. Then you can see at least, for this particular event, we also had a bartender, as well as a labor and a custodian. So you, so again, we do pension, workers' comp, we try to include pretty much anything, not just the basic wages with this. So you can see at the bottom before that gray line, that for this particular program, the total personnel costs were $331.62. The utilities are a little bit, not quite as black and white. The utilities are calculated where we take the budgeted amount that we have for utilities for Meadowbrook. We say that out of, and then we divide it for, per day for the year. Then we say that for the utilities, 65% of utilities are used for banquet events. The rest is used either for the snack operation, for pro shop, those type things. And then we break that percent down even further, depending on what type of event it is. So this is actually where you see the 4% there, it actually, you can put multiple percentages in there, depending on if it's a full facility rental, where they use the locker rooms downstairs, as well as all upstairs, or if they just use the fireplace room, which is our smallest room, that's going to have less utilities. And you can see the same as, can be said for the overhead and direct cost. Again, the total budgeted amount times, we're saying 65% is used for banquet operations. And again, percentage based on the type of event. And included in this is any office supplies, janitorial, facility supplies, contractual for somebody to come in and, you know, fix the HVAC unit and that kind of thing. So that's how we kind of, again, it's not exact, because it would be very hard to find for every single event, an exact amount. But it does at least account for some of it. And I do believe we do have a close number with that. Then you get down, we're still in expenditures, alcohol purchases, other purchases that may be made for that particular program. And then on the last page, you do see the total revenue for the program. So again, we do this for every event and every golf outing. So we do have for each month broken down and then compile them for the month, so then we have an outlook on the month. And that, those were the facility, those were the net revenues you saw earlier. Any questions about that before I move on?
I just have one question.
Yes.
So I like this. I think you tried to cover all the expenses, especially, that's kind of hard to do. But so is this loaded into a spreadsheet that we can see, like month to date, year to date? Are all these figures, you know, march across the spreadsheet?
Right now, they're in, they're separated by each month, which definitely could be then compiled into a year to date, so then you could see that across.
I just think it'd be interesting to see, you know, we could see at the end of the year.
Most definitely.
Where we were. The other thing that I'd like to, the only other thing I would like to see is to have us kind of set it up against break even. Because I, you know, I know we have a budget, and I'm sure we'll do fine on the budget. But I'd like to see if we're, you know, how much money we're actually putting into it, you know, are we going to make money on this? Are we ever going to be in the black? We just, I mean, this is encouraging, but...
Right. And it is based on per event, which at the end, you know, each month, we do have a percentage of, okay, you know, our recovery rate, saying how much, you know, we spent, how much we earned. And again, I think sometimes monthly, it's a little difficult because the revenue doesn't necessarily come in at the same, you know, during the same time when, say, we book an event for 2023, it's actually brought in at 2022. So it is a little difficult, but we do have those numbers as well. We just wanted to, this is what we were using when we came to you, saying, hey, we need to raise rental rates. Because unless they were, you know, purchasing alcohol, we were losing. So that's where, at least per event, we have it. But you're right, as far as when we're looking at the big purchases, you know, like that we're doing for the building, those aren't necessarily included in this.
You know, I think this is, this is exactly what I wanted to see. But I think when we get phone calls from people, or comments, you know, like you see, they're always, you know, how much are you subsidizing? They don't care about the little event, they're talking about, you know, how much money per year is, is the city subsidizing?
Sure. And we'll talk a little bit more about that coming up here as well. So.
I like the fact that you did the cost analysis, because I feel like that shows the potential revenue too, and the expenditures. And I think that would help a breakdown per month to month. Yes, maybe you don't have your total monthly, but you can compare it to last month, this month, next month. And you can kind of give a analysis breakdown from the month to month and see where you're at there.
Very much.
I like the breakdown. I think it's a great way to figure out your profit and loss and moving forward.
When you do look at the next slide, the, showing the facility rental revenues, as far as just the rental goes, this isn't including anything else. Is this somebody coming saying, okay, I want to book the ballroom, here's my however many dollars. You can definitely see in 2022, we have increased bookings. And again, this is January 1st through July 31st. That doesn't necessarily mean that the rental wasn't 2022 when it was collected, it could be in 2023. But this just shows, I believe, that the right decision was made by allowing outside caterers.
One question.
Yes.
Are those numbers for 2020 and 2021 for the total year or for the same time period?
Same time period, just as through, January through, January 1st through July 31st.
Possibly add a column for what we, what might have had for 2020 and 2021 and 2022 as it moves forward, so we can see how the numbers are comparing as far as additional revenues coming in?
Sure. And I do plan on bringing this back to you once we have everything. So we have a year to date to see it all, you know, all together. But we certainly, we certainly can do that.
Well, I mean, I like the idea from the standpoint, you're seeing 2021 and 2020, it's the fact that at this point, we've almost doubled the amount that you've seen as far as revenues from last year.
Yes, yeah. As far as rental revenues go, yes, for rental fees. Because I think we are, we are seeing a lot more of the baby showers, bridal showers, birthday parties, maybe that didn't, the smaller events that didn't necessarily benefit a catering company just to do, you know. But we definitely see the benefit, and we love seeing those people in there.
There was no past incentive for someone to do something.
Right, right.
I also love to see the consistency. You said consistency. And I think that's the key to success with the food items, you know, the pro shop, the snack bar, it's consistency. We've never had a consistency before. And I think that's very important. And when I tell residents about subsidizing, you know, here's the deal. This is new for us. We can't really have a projection yet. We will here, you know, by fall.
Right.
What's going on. And maybe we can compare what maybe Adrian and Heritage did with the catering versus since we've opened it up to caterers. I mean, that would be a nice feature to see what was done and what is now with the different caterers, and how much more revenue that brings too.
Okay, definitely. Next slide. We're going to move on to golf now, kind of switch from the banquet to the golf side as far as revenues go. You can see that we are dipping a little bit below 2021, but we're even greater than 2020, which was a great year. But we do see that, I do track the weather, basically how many days weather impacted golf operations, because that does matter. Through July 31st, so it would have been April through July 31st. In 2021, we had 25 days that impacted, were impacted by weather that's either below 45 or above 90, or it's raining, and we had to close the golf course. So we had 25 days in 2021 and 32 days in 2022. So that could, you know, I mean, may account for some of it. I don't think all of it necessarily, but we may see a little bit of that. And if you go to the next slide, you will see the breakdown of the revenues for the golf side by type. So you have the green fees, the carts, the passes, we're actually up in simulators and the miscellaneous. The miscellaneous does include, like we did have North Dayton Golf Academy do club sales at one time. So that's where the miscellaneous was up. And now I think we see it up because of our concession operations, that's included in those golf operations. So I'll be excited to see by the end of the year where we're sitting.
Do you know what the amount for the simulators?
Yes, I do. In 2020, we had almost 15,000, 14,925. In 2021, we had 9,927. And I think that was big, because we do have our, we have great showing at our winter simulator leagues, and we weren't able to do those in 2021 because of COVID. But in 2022, we're at 15,295.
And 20 was 15,000 for the year or just as of July?
Just as of July.
I have a question about sound system.
Uh huh.
Is that in the budget?
Yes.
For a sound, I just, from the event that we just had?
I am very, very excited. I will actually hope to be bringing you that quote here next, next meeting. So I'm very, very excited with that. I think that's going to really help with events. So.
What's the expense for the simulators?
Um.
Did we pay those out? We bought them, we paid for them, right? I think, I think we leased them for a certain period of time. I remember it was like 82,000.
Yeah.
Do you remember the buyer?
I don't remember if we bought them. I think, I do think we bought them out, right? I don't think that we, you know, there was the, it was a capital purchase?
It was a lease purchase.
Oh, was it? Okay, that.
I think it was a lease purchase.
Okay, then.
But Kenny, I think you're right. It was about 40, I remember about 40,000 for pretty much. Seems like 82-ish. So we're like, for the year, for 20 and 21, do you know what they made for the year?
I do not have those numbers on me right now. I certainly can get them to you.
I just wanted to see where we were on that.
And those, I believe, opened at the beginning of 19. So I can get you 19 numbers as well, so that you can kind of see where we're sitting with those simulators, since they're relatively new.
So we can pull that information together and get it out tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll send it out to council tomorrow afternoon.
The way I would guess it, you know, this is half a year, so I would, you know, it may not be exactly half. But I would say, if you double these, I would say we would be closer to a year. And then what's, and then if you could find out like the lifespan on them?
Sure.
Because I've been seeing the North Dayton place advertising that they're getting new simulators, that are state of the art, nowhere else in Ohio has them. So I wonder, I was going to actually bring that up tonight during the city manager's comments, but I'll do it now. I, I think it's something that, yeah, we should maybe pay attention to. I just wonder, like, will ours, will there be a need for ours still, or will the community still support them? So.
Okay, sure. Can get those numbers to you tomorrow.
Thank you. We still have legs on the simulator though.
They still have what?
Legs.
Legs?
Leagues, legs.
Leagues, yeah.
20,000 legs under a year.
I'm sorry. Yes, we still do. And we run a fall league that usually starts late October. And then we have the winter league. And this year, we are seeing some during rain, which we really, we tried to push that before, which we didn't get so much. But we are seeing some.
Well, you know, on the winter leagues this year too, we might think about what we're going to do different, since we have the liquor license and beer and the food stuff.
That's right.
So that should be, we should, we might be able to do a little better on that.
Yeah, when I played the league, or the simulator last year, there was nothing that they didn't, it was a like weird in-between period of us taking over the license and inherited not being there. So it kind of was like a weird time. So yeah, I get there and like, no beer, like this is going to be a long golf outing. But yeah, I think, I think that'll, I think, no, I think we get that going as far as like kind of mini catering down there like it was originally intended to. I think that'll just pique a little more interest in it.
And hopefully, maybe we can get more groups and things like that down there as well.
It's still new. I mean, more, I've seen a couple of the municipal owned courses in the area have talked about, have added them over the last couple of years shortly after we did. It's, it's still relatively new technology for like, I mean, outside of like big cities or places like, they kind of have like an indoor top golf. So I think just as more and more people, you know, latch on to it there, I think just we're going to see an overall increase of it. And I think, yeah, just, you know, if we keep, obviously we have, with like online bookings and all that, I mean, I, you know, we've got, you get the email list from that. So, you know, I think just continue the marketing push, push for it.
Is there a marketing strategy for the simulators?
Um, not, I'd like to revamp it come, now that things have changed with the liquor license. We really did when things started up with the simulators, offering different deals, but it didn't, it was, it was difficult to coordinate all that with onsite caterers. So I'm excited to kind of get with Jack on that and get that figured out. Okay, next slide. Just to show you, golf rounds. You have the total rounds, league rounds, paid rounds, and outing rounds. So the league paid and outing rounds are all within the total rounds. You, we do do, if, do do, with the total rounds, we have the paid rounds, which is somebody who's just coming in and paying a greens fee and a carts fee, cart fee. Things that aren't included in those paid rounds are the ones who have bought passes. So we don't count that as a paid round. As well as we still, it's been a few years, but we still have with, by Golf For Half, we're still running out that contract with them, where we got advertising for so many golf rounds. So, you know, we have not renewed that, we're just kind of waiting for that to come out. So those are included, those aren't included in the paid rounds as well. Okay, next slide. Going on to expenditures, you can see that the largest expense that we have are the wage and benefits. And just to break it down, we do have 60% of the total budget in golf and 35 in banquet. So it is, and again, with, you've seen labor costs that, you know, we just had a discussion with possibly what we're going to do with seasonals next year, you know, with that wages. So you can see that that is our largest expense. Included in the expenditures is about 31,000 as a startup expense for banquet. So that included the buyout of Adrian's liquor license, as well as some equipment, setting up Amanda's office, like the computer, the printer. So that roughly went to about, the legal fees, about those, the legal fees. So that came to about 31,000 that we won't necessarily see next year. So with the recovery rate, in 2021, we were at 80%. So Mayor, this is what you're kind of talking about with, okay, where are we sitting as far as, are we ever going to be in the black type of a thing? Right now, as of July 31st, in 2022, we are at 73%. And that's not including those startup expenses. With expenditures, we also are utilizing our advertising line item very well this year. We are trying to get out that we are, the changes that have been made and the changes that are going to be made. So we're working on new pamphlets, updated signage, as well as booth displays for, for bridal shows. Those seem to really help. And Amanda, thank goodness for her knowledge. So we're really getting that set up. Our, we're going to go to our first one in September, as well as we did sign on with Yelp for the golf operations to try to get some more golfers. So, and new golfers. Also with expenditures, we did have the ARBA money with the HVAC systems, which have been lovely this summer. It's so nice not having that portable air conditioning unit in the pro shop. So thank you. But having the bar, at a constant temperature, the kitchen, the office, restrooms, and the pro shop, it's just, it's, it's been wonderful. Next slide. Looking at August through December, so the remainder of this year, we have 27 rentals scheduled, seven more outings scheduled. We have some upcoming projects, the audio visual that we were talking about for the ballroom in Laveras. Unfortunately, one of those purchases is the fire system that people aren't necessarily going to see, but it's absolutely necessary, that we just got quotes for that.
I think we know it's necessary, right?
Yeah, we do. We do. Yes. And now that we're putting money into it, I want to make sure that fire gets there very, department gets there very quickly. So, but then, projects that will be bid in 2022, but probably not completed till 2023 is... but probably not completed till 2023, is the pump station for the, uh, golf course. Um, that is aging, and, as well as the replacement of the flat roof, skylights, and exhaust pipe of the building. Uh, we talked about the bridal shows, and one thing that Amanda and I are working on right now um, is surveys and reviews, trying to get, uh, people who have had events at Meadowbrook here recently um, to complete surveys, as well as go on to our different sites to do reviews, uh, because those are necessary. Um, with reviews, we have anywhere, because, uh, we have sites on Wedding Wire and The Knot, which we do get a lot of leads from them, uh, Google, Yelp, Facebook. So, um, we are, uh, trying to find creative ways to get people to complete those surveys, as well as go on and, um, do reviews for us. And looking on to 2023, um, staffing, again, you know, we are, um, looking already at staffing. Uh, one thing that we will bring to you, um, is possibly bringing on another person for the banquet side, a part-time person, um, to just help with events, um, uh, to kind of subsidize Amanda. She's doing a great job, but if we are continuing to increase, we need somebody else there to either do showings, do, you know, be there during the events, um, because we would really like to see those continue to increase.
Did we, are there someone this year for that?
That was Amanda. That was, um.
Wasn't there hosting for like a part-time events manager?
Mm-mm. Yeah, so, and again, we were just trying, you know, this was kind of our year just to see where we were, because we didn't want to overstaff, we didn't want to understaff, but, um, I think this would be extremely helpful, because then Amanda can look more at big picture items as well, so.
I actually view that as a, a good thing, hiring someone, because, I mean, we are starting to grow. And I think we're still in the infancy here, but the truth is Amanda puts in a lot of hours over there, as you know.
Yes, she does.
And I, I really want to make sure we don't burn her out.
Want to retain her, yes.
And, you know, and also have other people that know what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, and then that means more people there during, um, you know, hours when, uh, golfers are there, walk-ins and things like that, that somebody would be there, that hours would be staggered, so.
Does she stay for the events?
Oh, yes. Yes. Typically, yes. Um, if it's, especially if it's, um, a larger event, some events are, um, smaller, like in the, um, in the, uh, fireplace room, it's, you know, 10 to 20 people. She may get them started and then introduce them to another staff member where they can, you know, get ice or do whatever's needed for that. But pretty much any of the larger events, she's there from the time they set up at 8:00 AM until they're out the door at midnight.
So then I know that's something Tina?
Tina and I had talked about this. Um, so then she's there every weekend then? I mean, is there, every weekend there's an event?
During events. Like, if, um, we had, um, a weekend that surprisingly, we didn't have any events. I mean, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so she got it off, which is very exciting. Um, there have been times where I have come in to cover, um, just because she's had a family event or so, or again, she needs a weekend off. Um, and we've only had two events on the same night, so it's something I can easily do.
So then how does that work with her hours during the week? Does she get overtime for that, or?
No, um, so she is, um, overtime exempt, which means she does not get any overtime. Um, so she flexes her hours. So she may not then work, if she works all weekend, she may be not working on Monday and then maybe not on Thursday.
Okay.
Type of a thing.
So that goes back to the problem of someone not being there. And I know that's something that Tina and I had talked about, um, when we talked about bringing her on, making sure somebody was always there.
Which, I mean, it is kind of impo-, I mean, thank goodness, at least, um, right now, we have the pro shop, so the pro shop's able to give the information. We have information down there. They, they're able to give phone number. Um, people usually do call to make appointments, so Amanda does do a lot of, uh, by appointment. Again, it would be nice, yes, to have somebody there. Um, but it just, yeah, right now, there will be two days that she's not there.
Is, is the position that you're thinking full-time or part-time?
No, part-time, under 30 hours, so it would be under, um, the Affordable Care Act, so there wouldn't be insurance or anything involved.
I think it's necessary. I know that was a worry that we had from the beginning.
Yeah.
Saying, I mean, I remember saying, and Tina did too, that nobody would want to work every weekend, so.
Yeah, and again, I mean, it, it has been nice that, um, you know, we've had some off ones or, um, we've only had golf outings type of things, which, you know, she can get them set up and then, you know, she doesn't have to, yeah, so. Um, oh, also, um, looking into, um, I would like to see more, um, custodial there to, um, for the cleaning of the building, so kind of checking out our options with that, whether contracting out or, um, again, it's with the labor market, that is one difficulty. Um, but, uh, again, that will be brought to you, um, when we, uh, talk, uh, wages and things like that. The cart lease, um, expires in mid 2023, but we're gonna have to, um, sign a contract here soon. I'll, you know, we're gonna be putting it out to bid, uh, because there's such a pack order. I mean, surprise, right? Um, so we're gonna have to be, um, bidding that out and signing it. Uh, we do, um, it is gonna be kind of limited because our requirements are that the carts have lithium batteries and that they can go 36 holes. Because we only have, uh, right now, we have 50 carts. Uh, with some nice maneuvering, uh, we can rearrange the cart barn to get us 55. Uh, because we're finding on busy days, it's not that we don't have the teetines, it's we don't have the carts. We can't turn over the carts as quickly, so, um.
How long do they take to charge them?
Um, they, they take about 12, I mean, a good 12 hours to get the 36 holes out of them. So again, that's why we want that, so they can at least go out twice a day with no charge. Um, and with the, uh, with the cart lease, we are looking at the GPS units, um, which, yes, it's nice for people to be able to, you know, navigate the course with these GPS units, but we also like them because basically they'll shut down if they go off the cart path. So again, all, I don't know if you saw some Facebook posts where basically ruts were made, um, you know, some joyriding was had, those can, those will shut down, so we won't have that issue. Um, also, we are, um, and this is one thing that, uh, once, um, you know, we do get our footing, that programming's gonna be next. We're gonna be looking at that programming. Um, you know, we talked about bringing back the Mother's Day brunch, you know, with a caterer. Um, you know, and we had great success with the, um, Parks Commission's, uh, dance party. So, you know, we do wanna, we want to continue those things. And that concludes the presentation.
I just have one question, Elaine. Since you took this project over, do you prefer bartending or cooking?
Bartending. There's more tips than bartending.
Somehow we make another profit.
I, I have a question, and this is something you likely won't know right off the top of your head, but all, because I, I think this is all really great stuff, and it, we can, I can see the revenue's starting to come in now, and that's a good, what we all want. So I'd be interested to know what, um, percentage of this revenue are we getting in that's passive? What, in other words, what, you know, people are coming to us and saying, I want to schedule a golf outing. Because in my mind, for us to get to the next level is where we need to be, like you're talking about, having another person on staff and things, to have someone actually outselling it, selling us and saying, hey, you know, we, we want you to come here. You know, it's one thing to answer the phone and take the calls, which is great, but, you know, are we ever gonna have the capacity to actually sell the facility and sell the outings and things like that? I think that's where, you know, we'll actually start making the money.
No, I agree, and I think that Elaine and Jack are doing a good job and both working very hard on working on new marketing materials for the outings, for the bridal showers, for the rentals, um, and getting the word out that way, and looking at different venues like Yelp and, um, what else are we doing?
The Knot.
The Knot, the Wire.
Yeah. Which we do ask on our rental agreements where they heard from, you know, where did they hear about us? Um, and we still, the majority are, live in the community, you know, see it on my way to work. You know, I mean, it's, yeah. But we do, yes.
Live in the community, going somewhere else.
Exactly, yeah.
We're trying to grab them and keep them near and close.
Yes, and that's why I think the more events we have too, the more exposure we get as well, so.
I know reoccurrence on golf outings, like, for example, the Enzo Golf Outing, it's just this past weekend. And then I know Jay McMillan from Shiloh Church came to me and said, we've booked it, so that's another.
This month.
So, I mean, we're seeing reoccurrences on that, repeat visits, and that's what's important to make them stay here. And I think opening up the cater was a great idea because they worked with, uh, I'll just use this as an example, Rob's. So Jay said he had great success with Rob's. Um, Shelley and her staff really worked with the pricing to fit the needs. So I think that's a huge plus too, because when it's all said and done, you know, it's a charity event for them as well. So they wanted to cut costs and make sure that it's gonna be profitable for them, for the charity.
Yeah, most of, well, pretty much 100% of golf outings are fundraisers of some sort, so it is, you're absolutely right. And that's what we've tried to help as well, you know, um, buy non-alcoholic beverages, allowing them to bring them in, so that kind of, you know, they can get them wholesale and, you know, cut costs a little bit that way, so trying to help where we can.
Everybody wants more in terms of information that you provided, you know, give, give me one more bit of information, you know, just add another column to everything. But I'm gonna tell you right now, I mean, thank you for what you provided. I mean, it's a lot. There's always gonna be more, more that people want to see, but I think for right now, for what you're doing, it's really appreciated. At least it gives us a ballpark idea as far as where we're at and where we're going. So there's things that we need to look at potentially changing or redirecting.
Mm-hmm.
We have the eyes and the ears and the voice that you're providing essentially to make it happen, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, and I appreciate this opportunity to, you know, go in a new direction with Meadowbrook. I mean, I, it's, it's been very exciting and, um, a, a great endeavor. So, you know, I, I thank you for this opportunity as well. All right, thank you.
I think y'all, uh, know when you're telling bars.
I certainly, you will get an email. All right, thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Move to close the workshop.
Motion by Mr. Bachman to close the workshop, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?